Okay, welcome everyone. For a long awaited Kirk County Community Health Advisory Council August meeting. At least it's been a long awaited for me. And this council is administratively established through Oregon State statutes. We are an advisory council to the Kirk County Board of Commissioners. We do not accept public comments during the space of this meeting, but public comment is accepted before, as noted in the public meeting notice. And after there is a link to provide public comment within the meeting announcement. At any point, members of the public can reach out to appointed members of this council to provide input and feedback. We will take roll and Alex, I'm wondering if you would be able to do roll call of appointed members. Once we did that, we'll do staff introductions and we'll go from there. Liddell Harris.
Yes.
Erica Fredy.
Yes.
April Fong.
Yes.
Kimberly Mun.
Yes.
Oh Porterfield.
Yes.
Devin Nelson Harmon.
Yes.
Courtney Perez.
Yes.
And Bill Elliott. Not here and he's on. Sorry, he's on his hair. You're on. Thank you. Alex, do we have corn? Um, yes. Excellent. We do have June meeting documentation posted on the county website. That link is provided in the agenda for everyone. That meeting was a review of applicants to be appointed to this council. So thank you to everyone that was able to sit in on that review of applicants and for me. Staff introductions. Next, let's start on line. I don't think we have any. Oh, well, Alex, your name is online.
I'm Alex Greberg. I work at the Kirk County Health Department, the Mental Health and Suicide Prevention Committee.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hailey Morris. I just started with Kirk County Health Department and I am serving at the Regional Overdose Prevention Board Leader.
Um, I'm also, my name is Riley Martin and I'm also with the County Health Department. And I am primarily the Public Health Emergency Prejudice Response Coordinator. And now I work a little bit in tobacco prevention.
So, oh, hi, I'm Stephanie O'Neill. I am the Health Administration Manager and I supervise the Prevention and Health Promotion Team. And our members are very close.
I'm Angela Cummings. I'm the Program Director for Best Care.
Do we have anyone that I've not seen online?
AJ.
Oh, I see for staff.
Yeah. All right. So you're good.
Um, we are going to start with staff announcements and Alex, you are up.
But I'm on.
Yep.
Um, so I think I now have one from almost everyone except for maybe Devin. But for everyone that's on the council, if you haven't already, I just need signed copies of the Oregon Public Health Leading Lobby's form, April, it's taken news. I have those, right? Any others? Yeah. And I think Liddell, I have yours.
Yeah.
I know I think I have Kim's and Erica's, right? Do I have one from Erica? Perfect. So Devin, I can forward you the email with it and then just sign it and send it back to you. Yep.
I believe you need one as well?
Oh, yep, I have one too. You can see these.
Okay, uh, next is appointed member announcements. Or news or insights related to this work. I'm none, seeing no hands on the screen. We'll do, all right, so our next topic is a selection of a vice chair. Um, I believe that, I don't believe we've received any nominations by members prior to this meeting. Um, we do need a vice chair, please, to assist me in case I am not able to attend a meeting or whatever reason able to attend but not facilitate. Um, so if I believe, so I referenced our bylaws in the meeting packet. If you need a quick, quick peek at that, Alex, I don't know if you can pull up the packet and share the section around our vice chair selection.
Let me share it.
You should be able to share through Zoom. Coming up, bylaws are posted in the meeting packets.
It was Shannon Edgar, is that right? That's who it was.
Correct.
Okay. She's got to be in position.
And Shannon is no longer in the meeting.
Appointed.
Or in her previous position, yes.
You need me to pull it up online?
If I can figure out how to put it on my Zoom window, I can do it. Oh, share. There we go. Can I see it?
Thanks, Village.
There we go. So it's this part right here, section E.
Can we zoom in a little bit?
Where it says, are we recording too much? Are you all seeing that?
Yes.
And are all the appointments made? Like they have a full, and we're still opening?
There's, so, um, it's still posted. And recruitment happening through the county website. So, um, our minimum number is eight, max.
Eight. Number nine.
So if anyone, oh, those, so those are the duties. Can you follow the appointment process? So one or more of your peers can nominate, or you may nominate yourself. And nomination would require a vote.
I nominate April Fong.
Now the nomination, friends. April, is that something you even remotely have a capacity to do?
Um, and I can help you as much as I can. And I was just tell basically try to give you what you need to do.
Yeah. Because, you know, me signing documents, it worked out.
I can always come to you about it.
Thank you. You can tutor me.
Yeah.
But anyone else who would like to throw their hat in the ring?
Are you wishing other people were throwing their name in the ring? Awkward silence.
I've come to a point in my life where I embrace awkward silence.
Learning.
Acting dissociation. Okay, with the nomination, we would require a motion from an appointed member. Like April, our staff sharing everyone. Share, or vice chair.
Can I make the notion to have April be nominated as vice chair?
Would it, anyone like to second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Erica. Are there any opposed other than April? She, she is excited for them. Um, any abstentions?
I need everyone to go through and say their name and if they're yay or nay, please. So I'm gonna say your name and if you can say yay or nay, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Katie?
Uh, yay.
Liddell?
Yay.
Erica?
Yay.
April, she has to vote for herself.
She can abstain.
Okay. She goes abstaining. Devin?
Yay.
Did I answer anyone? Kim?
Yay.
Oh, yay.
Yes.
Is there anyone I'm missing? Did I get you all? Courtney, thank you. Do you say yay or nay?
That's what I got.
All right.
April, thank you. And welcome. Congratulations.
Next thing I'm learning how to say no.
I just know how much knowledge you have, April. And you're always there and you're just amazing. So you're gonna be great.
All right, speaking, we already answered this question earlier. We do still have member recruitment posted on the county website. If votes come to you as staff or appointed members, you can direct them that way for more information. Oh, we, we front loaded this real happy because our next topic is bylaws. Um, Alex, if you can pull, are you able to pull those up?
On the red line.
Um, yes, we included our current bylaws. Those were in the meeting packet in reference to appointing our vice chair. We also included a redlined version that staff are providing to us for consideration. We can, um, take a look at those now. We can accept all or part of those recommendations and Alex will walk us through them. And to be clear, that us approving all or some of these recommendations will then go to the Board of Commissioners for adoption and they can also approve or decline changes.
Can I get just one more little thing? One more zoom in. Thank you. All right. He's still single. Okay. Um, so am I, I, what do I, sorry?
Uh, summary, summary of changes. So everybody did receive them when the agenda went out. But if Alex, you can summarize and where, and it's available for questions.
Yeah, so we, in the name and definition, all we kind of did is we just went through and labeled anywhere where it's Kirk County Board of Commissioners, we're just saying Board of Commissioners and anywhere where it says the council, it's obviously Kirk County Health, Community Health Advisory Council. And then we added in this part that we're in accordance with Oregon Regulatory Statutes that require public meeting notification and all that kind of stuff, at least in a separate section, but not even labeled what it was. It just said public meeting law. So we put in there what the actual statutes were so people can look them up if they need to. Um, and then just, yeah, right there is this small edit. And then, um, we reordered for this section is the purpose. And we just made this one more inclusive, sort of just citizens. We put individuals living, working, learning and recreating in Kirk County. And then we had on here that we will annually determine what our focus and projects and progress are, which is added at the word advisory was necessary, especially in cases like this where we haven't met before and we haven't reviewed it. So we're gonna probably do it sooner. It's on the agenda today.
Yes, and it's a three year work plan?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why there's some change in that language. A lot of us know that the work that we are engaging with here is typically a marathon, not a sprint. So to have an annual work plan, doesn't make as much sense. We'll have annual activities that we're working towards and doing, but the overall work plans will stay in place longer.
And then we had a few sections that were redundant, like this section, so we removed it. Um, this looks like I rewrote things, but the computer was just not renewing the format I wanted. So I just changed some of the wording, again grammar and more clear wording and getting rid of some redundancy. Um, this is for membership. I don't think anything in here was crazy changing. Right, Dean?
Oh, no, you're right. Okay. Right there in membership.
Which one?
I think it aligned us with the county's process for recruiting members.
Okay, yeah, so there's slightly different rules that the county follows now for, I think, all of their groups and councils. So we reworded it to fit that. And this is the same thing. So basically, um, if for whatever reason, April, you can no longer be the chairperson, um, you just have to notify the Board of Commissioners and then we'll figure it out from there. Same with you, Katie. Um, and then if there's any vacancies at all by any members, we just have to let the Board of Commissioners know. Um, this section, it was the same thing. I think we removed an entire section down here that stated when we were gonna notify people and we just included it all in the same areas. And we aligned it with Oregon's public meeting notification timeframes because we had different timeframes in our bylaws before, but we're making it really complicated to make sure we're following our rules or their rules. So we aligned them so they're all the same. Oh, for committees, um, we just changed wording again to match it. We had ad hoc and temporary both in there, so we made them all the same words. Um, and then just clarification about how non-council members can serve on standing or temporary committees as approved by the council and that they can vote on matters within the committee. But once the vote gets brought to the council for an official vote, they are not allowed to vote in those instances. Um, I think the rest of it was just Katie reforming the signatures for the chair, vice chair and the commissioners decide. Did I miss anything, Katie?
I think so.
Any questions from anyone?
Most of it was alignment with both county policy and state statute and making that very clear for us. I want to do a quick sound check as well. Is everyone online here and okay still?
Yeah.
Do I need to use my big kid voice? Okay. Do I need to turn and face the microphone?
I can hear you okay, Alex.
No questions? Okay, so this is another action item for us that would require a motion to take these revisions, all our parts, to the Board of Commissioners for review and a request for adoption.
This is Kimberly, I can motion.
This is Liddell, I can second the motion.
Is there any discussion, clarification, requests for any of it to not move forward or all of it? I'm assuming, Kimberly, that your motion is that all requested changes be, um, approved by us and then sent to the Board of Commissioners. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. No other discussion? All right, Alex, you want to run it through? Okay. Katie, yay or nay?
Yay.
April?
Yay.
Courtney?
Yay.
Both?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yay.
Devin?
Yay.
Right before people say it. Liddell?
Yay.
And Erica?
Yay.
Did I miss anyone this time? Perfect, okay. Thank you all. I didn't hear any abstentions or nays. So much positive. The next item up for us gets a little more exciting. This is our, a review of our work plan and a request for if something is, um, feels no longer applicable or if there's something else you want to bring to this, um, we'll probably spend a couple meetings reestablishing the work plan and making sure that we have clear direction, um, going forward. Alex, do you have this available? We had three big bucket goals. The first of those goals was around staffing and that we would be working towards securing and maintaining quality health workforce in Kirk County.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
What is some zooming? Thank you for our eyes and the back.
Get really small.
When we originally went through this process, so the scope of this advisory council is um, really all health services in the county. The public health has a role in, um, working with partners to assure access to quality healthcare, um, and then providing some safety net services. And then best care as well has a county requirement to be providing certain services in the behavioral health space. And then, um, when we look back at public health's role is ensuring that behavioral health, dental, um, really all aspects of care are available to the community. Not that we necessarily provide them as public health, but there, we're working in spaces like this to get community and partner feedback, um, to work towards these staffing goals. And so when we originally had the discussion about, well, how do we, if we aren't necessarily the employers, we do have some providers in this space. Um, what can we as a community advisory council do related to staffing? And one of those things was around, um, access to childcare. So when the need came up for being able to retain our staff, um, they're needing childcare in this community and access to quality, affordable, um, childcare services. Addressing burnout was another thing that came up as part of the crafting of this work plan. Um, and that's really around maintaining that quality workforce. Um, housing price, price was identified as a need related to staffing and so was the process of recruitment and retention and how we might be able to support our partners in the community with those, with those processes. We have done some work. We've brought in partners over the course of time to present on programs that they offer, ways that they might be able to support the community. Um, and those are outlined under activities. I just want to do maybe a temperature check with folks to see if there are thoughts around this specific staffing goal and some of those root causes that we're looking to address are, have some of them been addressed through work in the community? Do we still need to be going in that direction? Um, I think I'll stop there with that particular goal and welcome insight. We can start with childcare. Is, if child, well, let's start with staffing. Do we need to be looking at staffing in Kirk County for our health services?
It is still a problem, yes. Oh, and not, not as much as it was though. I feel like when we first said this, probably about two years ago or something, um, but I do think that it's still a thing.
Yes.
Well, it's always hard to recruit, like especially providers and stuff getting to a rural community because we don't have as much to offer, like we have lots of recreational things, but we don't get into the doctors. But we are getting to a new mosaic, so.
Nice.
I think they can retain them for a while.
MDs?
What, MDs? No, next practitioners, so. So we're talking MD road.
And so it might be worth talking about in future meetings, what is working for folks and maybe what some of those gaps are. I'm hearing that, yes, staffing is needed. Is that piece around a childcare focus still ill appropriate? I haven't heard that as an issue in quite well. So that's good. Off my head.
I never heard it as an issue, but I don't think that it's changed. I don't know if people just stopped talking about it because they just kind of relate to how it is or if it, people that don't have children meeting with the area now or, I don't, I don't really know. But I haven't heard it much either, so.
I hear all the time that a lot of mine, the ones I hear are special needs issues. So it's, it's, it's a whole different realm.
They would like, kind of like from the patient lens, I would hear that they, like they can't work because they can't afford, like what they would make, they just cover childcare and not even make it worth their time. So they're going to go ahead and stay living in the poverty level without getting help, even with help sometimes from DHS or whatever, so unable to balance make it. So I don't know. I have to promise that on the mail service.
Well, that's insane. We're get, we'll get to hopefully the action item piece, but I just wanted to make sure that we're, as a group, are going in the right direction.
Oh, and I think a few people who have tried to apply for help or pay for childcare, but because they have jobs making the bare minimum, they don't qualify. And they're told, well, if you don't work, then you qualify. And they're like, well, then I don't need it. So they're struggling in that cycle of do I choose not to work and get childcare for free or do I work and get nothing to help?
Which I think adds to the stress of just having a family and man. So it just becomes too stressful to try to find the resources or work. I, I hear that a lot too. I agree.
Heard that too, yeah.
So that, it sounds like there's a couple different dynamics happening. There's maybe a little bit less with the staffing issue, but as a community health issue and the health of our community, there's that tension between, um, that social driver of income and family supports that is at play. How about staff, uh, the course of staff burnout as it relates to retention?
Absolutely.
On the behavioral health space?
Absolutely.
Resounding, it's not a, no, let up in that realm. It's still something that we want to wrestle with in this space.
A really big topic. I think it also boils down to a lot of different systems, different subcultures and different cultures found in different, um, fields. I don't know, it's a tough one, I'd be a bear. But not, not, um, something we should act to shy away from. We also have a lot of good strengths in our region too, because we have a lot of things to offer that I think help with burnout, especially nature.
About housing?
Housing or?
We're, I mean, we're going big on this. We really want big on this work plan. Yeah. In identifying, I guess I'll start with, is it still? Is housing still a dynamic when recruiting and retaining staff, provider staff?
Yes, sometimes. I mean, I can just think of in the last year, there are two clinicians that we offered physicians to that were going to be coming from out state and then they backed out because of, they weren't even applying something.
I might also caveat this conversation with acknowledging that these are really big, complicated. Each one of these in and of themselves is a really big, complicated thing to look at. I do think that, well, no, there's a lot of work happening in our region that we might be able to tap into here at the Crete County level. And I think that's where this group can can be really beneficial, because a lot of those conversations happen at the big regional level and they don't necessarily find their way to the right folks on the ground in Crete County. And so that could be a space for us as members to figure out what is happening or isn't. And being able to speak as a group to say, hey, we as a group of community members and providers and interested parties say this is important in Crete County, so what is being done for Crete County? And again, because we're an advisory to the Board of Commissioners, it could be a really powerful thing to be looking at the nuances in Crete County related to the work that we're doing and be able to share that with our electeds as well. So I do like the, the thought of, yes, these are big. I don't think we should shy away from them, but we also don't have to solve them. But maybe we could, and how cool would that be?
I know in one of the cadets in the housing front, in my own clinical world, we apparently have two travelers in that space and not being fine, affordable furnished housing in Primal was potentially deterrent for them even in a contract to affect.
I think, sounds like that housing direction is still relevant. I noticed in the, so Central Oregon Health Council did a regional health assessment, regional health improvement plan. And when they looked specifically at what Crete County feedback was bringing up, it was, it was related to housing. Like that pretty consistently stayed at the top of the feedback that they were getting, which we're all probably getting something similar. That recruitment and retention item is maybe fairly has some overlap with the burnout objective. Is that something that we feel like we have appropriate influence in this space? The other thing with this work plan is we, we kind of put out all the, wouldn't it be great if we could look at these things? And then when we are building out activities and who's able to actually divvy out, what can we ask our staff to work on? Some of them are like a back burner status where we're keeping an eye on it, but not necessarily thinking and asking stances at council. So in this space, so there's some blanks and like notes in this work plan because we really hadn't gotten too far with some of these because we were busy investing time in some of the others. So we'll be able to prioritize our energy around these as well. So is recruitment and retention one that we feel like we should or could put some energy into?
Separate things, like recruitment to the town and stuff, yeah, recruitment to the area, but retention's really up to the organization. I don't know that we would have any say over how to retain or the culture that's being in the place you're working, how your work culture is and how you find joy in your day. You know, I think all that stuff was really central to where you'd work. I don't know how we would have anything with that, but recruitment, yeah. We can help with some recruitment. Like, we, we lost a provider that was interviewed here because he was single and he was like, what's the nightlife like? And I'm like, the street rolls up at eight, I don't know, I'm gonna tell you. I think we solved that one, but there was like, we could make sure that there's more to know what we offer here in Primal.
We did. If anyone tied in, I am not even going to be able to say the name of the group, but maybe someone could help me out. There was a group at one point who, there's a rumor, something. Because it always is. Who would be community folks who would kind of wrap around a candidate and say, and introduce them to folks at the schools or in neighborhoods or kind of give them a sense from somebody who lives here of what is or could be available in those perks. And I know our, our chamber could maybe help us in that space, but it hasn't been around, at least in the health services space for quite a while. It hasn't been that kind of tied to community investment in saying, hey, we, we're saying as a community, we need quality providers, but we're kind of sitting back and not inviting them in. And I think that is one of the strengths of our community being small and tight net is we do have folks that could welcome them in and it's not just on the individual organizations to woo them.
Hey, this is Kimberly, just to speak from St. Charles perspective. For recruitment and retention, you know, our retention rates are better than they have been in years. And the ability to hire, bring on every new grad nurse that's in school right now, that's even with our organization. We just don't have the space for them because we aren't losing nurses like we were. The only recruitment piece, though, is the primary care providers. Even the, the mid-levels or APPs. We just can't recruit enough of them to care for the community.
Need mosaic is talking about doing a residency program for, in Primal for practitioners, just to try to recruit some more. I mean, so there is active work being done, but it's long work. It's long work.
I wonder if related to this space is as far as our influence of an advisory group is making people aware of that. So people are still identifying it as a need. And so maybe we can make folks aware of the efforts that are happening and that their voicing of an issue isn't going unheard or unaddressed. And here are the things that, even if we're sharing that with our elected officials, it can be beneficial in that space. We might not be able to do anything directly for it, but we could raise awareness. Looks like Erica's had to step aside for a phone call, but it's still, she's still with us.
I will say on the behavioral side, at least for, for best care with the recruitment and retention piece. And like St. Charles, we've actually got like higher retention rates than we have in all of our positions except mental health clinicians. So that continues to be sort of, people come, they get their hours, they get licensed, they go to private practice. Like, that continues to be the pattern that we see. And so I don't know that anything's ever going to change that. CMHPs have notoriously kind of been, where you get them trained up and then they go.
And I think another big problem for all of them is also the federal. What was my train of saying? They pay off your student loans after you work in a rural area for so long in certain positions for doctors, physical therapists, yeah, right? Educational doctors, doctors of five years, I can remember. They're all, they all have a different time frame, but a lot of them come here for that. Get it and then go somewhere where they get paid more.
For sure.
Yeah. So there's nothing we can necessarily do to change that, but I know that's a big incentive for people to come for a short period.
And I mean, I'll take them for a short period, but when you think about mental health counseling, right? And you think about somebody coming in, people are always like, you're my fourth therapist in three years. It's like, sorry.
One of the things that St. Charles Madras has really leaned into, Kimberly, I don't know if you can speak to this at all, that close partnership with education institutions. Because it shows where folks do their residencies, their internships.
Clinicals.
Yeah. If they can get connections there, even if it isn't a rural space, they're more likely to stay there than if they are just looking for that rural write-off temporary thing. So if they can get in and get established in a community, they're much more likely to stay long-term. So that could also be a space that we explore and help our partners explore. Did I do that justice, Kim?
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of work in Jefferson County with the residency program. So bringing in actual residents, MDs. And we have two starting tomorrow that, and we're going to be starting every year with more, so we just keep bringing them in. And really, they're committed to the rural communities and that's where they want to build their practice. We also are partnering with COCC in Jefferson County to bring on eight nursing students that just do their clinicals at Madras in Jefferson County. And so, and it's like the process of getting into the program truly is, are they a Jefferson County resident? And then going through the list. And so then it's keeping care local. The community is, we're building the community and then the people want to stay because this is where they live. And so even like that approach could be a possibility even with Crete County, right? Because it's very successful.
And behavioral health, too. I know I've done an application for a grant here, and that was some of the data I used to justify those grants to get more interns right in school, so.
I'm doing a quick time check and I want to make sure we have space for the rest of the items on our agenda. I'm wondering if it would be, if I could ask that we keep this work plan as a maybe standing item that we look at. So we still have health systems, coordination and the accountability piece. That more statutory requirement left to review. So I might ask that we keep that, again, as a standing item for a while. We'll keep, this is posted and available on, online for people to review on an ongoing basis, so. If it would be all right to do, maybe we just talk about health systems next time. And so if folks can look at what's in there and come back with some feedback or insight, that would be really helpful. And then once we get through the need of the work plan, we'll start setting some action items. And letting loose our staff and each other to do some work in this space. Does that sound okay? Hi. Angela, I have you up next. Or, so again, speaking of kind of standing agenda items, staff presentations from both best care as our CMHP and public health, because those are entities that were specifically asked to provide some oversight and accountability support. When, we'll keep presentations from them on an ongoing basis. And if you have suggestions of who you would like to hear from going forward, we welcome that as well. When Alex sends out requests for agenda items, you can add those there or email her separately. But for now, Angela, you are up with maybe some overview.
Yeah, just an overview. So I knew that we were going to have a couple new people. I thought we were going to have like, I don't know, five or six new people, but I think we've only got
There are.
Two or three?
I think there's one new person.
That's a few. That's a few. So I thought it might be helpful to just kind of give an overview of what the CMHP's role is. And so normally, kind of what we've been doing in this space over the past few years is I just report on kind of one of the service elements from the big contract that we have with OHA so that folks can understand like, what are the things that were statutorily required to do? But since we were going to have some new people, I thought just sort of an overarching kind of like, what is the CMHP might be helpful. And if you've got questions, just let me know. I was going to create this nice little like written sort of thing to hand out to everybody and I did not get around to doing that, so. But the CMHP is different than sort of like a regular outpatient clinic in that the CMHPs do have all kinds of things that we are statutorily required to do. And then if you think, so, and I'll just use best care as the example. The best care is the CMHP in both Crete and Jefferson County. But we also have like an outpatient clinic in Redmond. Outpatient clinic in Redmond, all that they do is they do mental health counseling and SUD counseling and that's it. People walk in out the street, they get their counseling services, just like if we were to choose to go into therapy somewhere. What sets the CMHPs apart are all of these other things. And so you can kind of think of the CMHP as the safety net services for the community. So we are obligated to provide 24/7, 365 days a year mobile crisis services. So that's going out into the community. Most of the calls are the jail or the hospital, but we do get calls in community, to somebody's house, a library or inside the street or wherever. And then based on kind of the outcome of that, our role is to get people into higher levels of care. If that's what's necessary, we're safety planning people home. Unfortunately, we no longer have the Brooks respite option that was in Redmond. I don't know if anyone has to live in the Brooks, but that did close. That's a very bummer. And then there's more of the like forensic legal side of things that we are supposed to do. So those are like the civil commitment proceedings. So if you're not familiar with what that is, if somebody is found to be a danger to themselves or a danger to somebody else, or they're so mentally ill that they are unable to meet their basic needs and they will become a danger to themselves, but it's got to be imminent, then we are the people who go out and do the investigation, which involves meeting with them, meeting with the doctors, meeting the family, whoever that might be. And then taking that to trial if need be. We do, we begin a lot of civil commitment investigations. I would say when we first took over in December of 2019, that first year of 2020, we probably had only 10. This year, we're already at 60 plus that we've started. But most of the time, they don't go to trial. So since we took over in December of 2019, we've only gone to trial, I think, five times. But we have to start the investigations on anybody that the hold is placed on at the hospital. Then the other sort of forensic legal side of things is what's called aid and assist. If you're not, I mean, I did go into this a couple of years ago in this meeting. But that is if somebody has been arrested for a crime and either the defense attorney or the DA or the judge calls in to question the person's ability to aid in their own defense because of their mental health. There's a whole process of things that we are supposed to do as the CMHP. But I won't get into all of that right now. I can certainly do that if you guys want to go into like a service element, you know, if you do that in the service element day. But ultimately, the long story short is our role as the CMHP and that is to determine, like, do what's called a community consultation, determine, do we have the resources to restore them in the community? Or if not, do they go somewhere else? If you are following sort of behavioral health news at all, aid and assist in the state of Oregon is a big nightmare right now. And just recently, just because it's an interesting thing that most people don't know. So OHA has been found in contempt for not Um, so O H A has been found in contempt um, for not. Handling these uh, cases in a, in a faster way, right? And so what's happening is they've been finding that most of these folks are not able to be restored in the community. Like that's just how it is. Some can be, but most can't be. And so they're sitting in jail waiting for a bed at the state hospital. This has nothing to do with us. At this point, I'm just sharing this because it's really interesting. Um, once they were found in contempt, um, O H A now is having to pay a daily fine. Uh, for every single person in the state that is sitting in jail waiting to go to that bed. So it's a, and I think it's five hundred bucks, I think it's five hundred bucks a day. It's pretty substantial. Um, well, it does have an impact because we're not able to get people transitioned to care. You know, we're running into this issue of not having people wait in our jails, in our hospitals. Yeah. Um, not as big of an issue as let's say Maltoma, where they might have twenty-five people waiting for a bed. Here it's, you know, one person generally. Um, but it's just a big, like the whole system is just a nightmare in the state right now. So in case you wanted to know that, you can Google it if you'd like. Um, let's see. Uh, and then, so, okay, so here's all of these statutorily kind of like, you have to do these things, right? Um, and but then there's also the um, the outpatient services for mental health and S U D. And the mental health services kind of follow a continuum, so based on somebody's need, right? So we have low level sort of outpatient therapy. That would just be, you know, somebody coming in off the street, hey, I'm going through something, I want to talk to somebody. Just like if any of us were to seek out a counselor or a counselor. Um, our priority population certainly has to be the severe and persistent mental illness folks, though. Um, there was a point in time a few years ago where we did actually have to um, start screening people out. Uh, there was a point in time where I only had two mental health counselors on the adult team. Um, which was a pretty scary place to be. I do have six now though, so that's great. Um, but uh, and it was kind of like, you're a low level, just an adjustment disorder diagnosis. I'm sorry, like, we can't see you right now because we've got, you know, this, you know, person with schizophrenia over here. So priority population is the S P M I folks, so that's schizophrenia, bipolar, borderline personality disorder, any of the schizos actually. Um, anyone who's uh, suicidal obviously is going to be a big priority. Um, and so they'll come in and then we'll determine what sort of services do they need, right? So if it's low level counseling, they might just meet with a counselor. If they have uh, more needs, then we've got the community support services uh, folks that come in. And so that's where our supported housing program comes in, that I can talk to you a little bit more about. Uh, supported employment, we've got peer support, case management. So all of those folks work to link those people to various kinds of things. Um, so we definitely get a lot of people that maybe haven't seen their, you know, a P C P in ten years, or don't even have a P C P, or haven't seen a dentist in however long. And so our case managers can help them establish care, um, link them with any entitlements that they might be eligible for. Supported employment is a fidelity program, um, and that's for, I mean, folks do have to have a severe and persistent mental illness diagnosis. To be in compliance with fidelity. Um, and so that's typically folks whose mental illness has either prevented them from being able to get a job. Or maintain employment. Um, and so then the job coach works with them on a resume and interview skills. And can even, when they get a job, go out with them and do some on-the-job sort of shadowing to help them, you know. If voices, let's say, start flaring up, right? Then we can have somebody who's kind of there with them to like, well, let's do a break over here, and you know. Pardon me. So um, I think we've got about fifteen people working with supported employment right now. Um, and she's got a decent track record of helping folks get jobs. And sometimes they're only working two hours a day. Um, I mean, it's what can this person uh, actually do? Um, and then the supported housing program similarly is only for individuals with severe and persistent mental illness. Uh, we have a case manager and a peer that is strictly devoted to the clients that are under the umbrella of supported employment. And we receive funding from O H A to pay a portion of those folks' rent. Um, and these are individuals who either would not be able to ma- obtain or maintain housing. Without those additional supports. Um, so they do have to have some kind of income. Most of them are on disability for their mental health issues. Um, but it's a portion. Uh, and there is, um, it used to be we only had twenty slots and all of those twenty slots stayed full. Um, and then we had a waitlist of like fifteen other people. Um, but recently the contracts were combined between Crook and Jefferson. And so between the two counties, we actually do have a hundred spots now, which is pretty nice. Um, and so we do have people on the waitlist. It's less so because we don't have the money or resources to help them. Well, it's that we can't get them into something either because of their background or the whatever the rent might be. Uh, even with our help, they still can't afford it. And then the next level is what's called a third of community treatment. And so that's kind of the highest level of outpatient services for folks with severe and persistent mental illness. Um, so you hear people talk about like the ACT team. Um, and so that's an interdisciplinary team that consists of Q M H P, so it's a master's level clinician. Um, a case manager, a peer, a nurse, supported employment. And then they have access to the psychiatric prescriber. I'm missing somebody. Oh, and the S U D counselor. So that team works with a very small number of people, but they are the most severely mentally ill in the community. Um, those are generally going to be the people that are going to be working with those aid and assist clients that I mentioned. Or anyone who's um, civil commitment, coming kind of out of, uh, out of civil commitment, wherever they may have been, if we can ever get them anywhere. Um, so yeah, that's the ACT team. And then we've got S U D services. Um, so we've got um, uh, three levels of S U D services right now. So we've got lo- um, level one treatment services, which is less than nine hours a week. Intensive outpatient services and day treatment services. Um, we just opened up our sober house, so that opened up. Three weeks ago now, um, two or three, I mean, just opened up. We have our first person in there. We only have one person who's in there right now, though. Um. Which is interesting because we were kind of hopeful that we would just get all beds filled, like as soon as we opened the house, and then that didn't happen. So, but we've got this thirty-day clean. You have to be thirty days clean in order to go into the sober house. Um. What am I missing? Oh, child and family. We can't forget about child and family. So we do have child and family services as well. Similar to uh, the adult services, child and family kind of operates on a continuum. So we've got sort of low-level outpatient services. But then we have um, what's called wraparound services, which is another fidelity program that we can go into. Um, I I B H T, which is intensive in-home behavioral health treatment services, which we're not really doing right now. We have all of the staff for it and I'm, I'm not sure why we're not. Um, I don't know if we haven't had kids who've sort of met the criteria for that. Or if they're just not pushing that, but we should be pushing it, if the family is appropriate for that. Um, and then same thing on the adult side. We've got a case manager to support the children and families. We've got a youth peer support specialist and a family parent partner who's a peer support for parents. Um. I know I'm missing something, but those are probably kind of the big.
Mike is usually here.
Oh, yes. So, and then we have the I D D program as well. So the C M H P and the C D D P, which is the Community Developmental Disabilities Program, they're actually two separate programs. But it's like, we, I mean, they're all under Best Care and they're, you know, really work closely together because there's a lot of overlap with those clients. Um, so our I D D building is on the other side of town. Um, but those folks are responsible for coordinating the services for individuals with um, intellectual or developmental disabilities. So they're not the ones actually providing the service, but they're the ones who are coordinating those services and determining eligibility for services. And Mike was just saying in a meeting, um, last week, I think it was, that we um. I mean, don't quote me on the numbers, but it's something like this. Uh, that when we first took over five years ago, we had about eighty-something I D D clients. Um, and now we're serving a hundred and twenty-something. Um, so we are seeing the eligibility just continuing to go up. And similar to mental health and S U D, I mean, the, the numbers are just continuing to go up, like nothing's going down. Um, which is. When we look at that thing we were talking about with recruiting and, you know, retention, right? Um, we're just going to need more. Um, and interesting fact, when we took over five years ago, I had one person on our S U D team. That was it, one person. And I have an S U D team now of twelve. So, I mean, that's a substantial, obviously, uh, huge, huge uh, difference. Um. And like I said, we've got six mental health clinicians right now. We've got three and a half um, child clinicians. Um, and it just keeps on, it just keeps growing, so. Any questions? Any questions? I wish I had something written for you.
Who's the sober house board?
Anyone, sex-specific families? Um, so right now we are just doing mail. Um, and they do have to, um, I mean, they have to have thirty days clean. Um, and be enrolled in our day treatment program. So they do not have to pay any rent or electricities or anything. I mean, all they're responsible for is their own food and hygiene. Um, so the, the goal is that they um, and they can come from anywhere. I mean, some of them might be current clients probation, might say, hey, we've got somebody, but it is going to be someone who's enrolled in services. Um, and then they can be in there for up to a year. So our goal is for that first three months is really heavy treatment, where we don't really want them working. We want you to be coming to treatment, focusing on your recovery. And then as they start cutting back and getting us, you know, getting a part-time job, beginning to save their money. All the while, working with our case manager on how to budget and save and things like that. Because it's not necessarily been a skill that they have, you know, had before. And um, and then eventually um, you know, be able to just be in low-level outpatient. Which might just be seeing a counselor once a week or something, and then be able to work a full-time job while they're able to save up enough money. Um, we just got our first person in there though, like I said, and he might leave before a year is up. But that, that's kind of where we're at, is they can be in there for up to a year. Um, and the way that it's set up is the house is actually divided into, it's a duplex. So it was a house we made into a duplex, and so we've got five beds in both sections. Um. And I guess if we don't get enough people, maybe we would play with the idea of making one of them a women's house. The only concern about that is, I'm sure you know what the concern is. I used to be the director in our residential program. We had. We had, you know, folks having fun in the bushes. We don't want that happening at our house. So, um.
Is it eighteen and over?
Yes. Um, eighteen and over, um, and, and then there's even, you know, specific rules too, like they can't have any guests. I mean, if you have children, we're sorry, but we don't want to take any chances, so they're going to see their kids like at the park or whatever. Um, so no guests. We've got about fourteen cameras up all over the place. Um. If they do relapse while they're in the house, it's not going to be an automatic, you're kicked out. Um, but if they use on the site, or they have anything onsite, that will be an automatic, you're out. Um, but if they do relapse and are able to just get back up, you know, all right, hey, I screwed up, let me get back on the wagon. Then we're willing to work with them as long as they didn't use onsite or have anything. So we're so excited. This is like four years in the making. We had the money and we bought this house three years ago. And it's taken a really long time, so it's very exciting.
Alright, I'm gonna shift, I think part of your um, recognizing that the need is increasing. Um, bring me to our prevention and health promotion team, which we also have. Um, the ability, ability to provide some input in this space to the work that they're doing. To hopefully curb numbers that may get to an acuity that requires uh, treatments. So we have two um, asks, two things to review with you today. And asks for feedback and input to the work that Prevention and Health Promotion is doing.
Yes, so um, we have, like you were saying, two plans to present today. Um, I don't know how much time we'll have to really discuss, but um, our first one is our Fair Health Access uh, Plan. Also known as an equity plan. Um, we changed it to Fair Health Access so that uh, we could properly convey to the community what exactly we're trying to accomplish. Because you can see that big word equity and think whatever you want, but Fair Health Access is really what we're trying to provide here. Um, so that plan is mandated through our public health modernization funding. Um, and that was just completed in June. We haven't really done anything with it. Because we've had a bunch of other plans due right now. So um, it is ready and sitting there and waiting for feedback from this group. Um, about implementation. Um, there is kind of an outlined implementation plan in it, but. Um, obviously open to feedback and uh, going through it and seeing. Yes, this is what we need for our community. No, it's not. We need to make these changes or whatever. So I think those are, that's linked in the notes.
I have a full plan.
Um, so if anybody has a chance, can look at that. I don't know if we'll have time in another meeting to kind of dig into it. But um, we are open to any and all suggestions. The other one that we have, uh, for some feedback is our overdose response plan. Or is that regional?
Um, it has a small regional call up, but.
Okay, so I'm gonna pass it over to Haley. She's the one who's been working on that along with Alex.
Yeah, um, so we, one of our deliverables for O H A is this um, overdose spike response plan. Um, and it's still pretty, it's early stages right now. But ideally, in the next couple of months, the goal is to really build this out and make it a actionable plan. In case we do see like spikes in the community or the larger, like tri-county area. Um, and kind of just like laying out like, who's responsible for what in that response? Um, how can we like streamline that, coordinate uh, what folks are doing in their different capacities? Um, so like Best Care, for example, or law enforcement corrections, how can all those pieces basically plug into each other? Um, in a way that we can respond quickly. Um, and hopefully prevent in the first place, but be able to kind of monitor, use surveillance and then respond. Um, so yeah, very early stages. I'm, like I said, I'm new to this as well. I've been here for a month now. So I'm kind of really just meeting with folks right now. Um, seeing what's kind of already established and then trying to plug that into this plan. And then eventually I'd like to obviously meet with everyone who's going to be a part of this process and really like, make sure it all makes sense to everybody, so. Yeah.
One of the things I appreciate how central Oregon has approached this. Kind of top-down requirement is we recognize that having a plan very specific to opiates. Was incredibly important, especially in the beginning of that epidemic. And we wanted to make sure that we were doing, we had a plan in place that was responsive to really any. Ruh-related overdose scenario, so that we weren't pigeonholing ourselves. So the, the plan has been written um, more generally. To be able to leverage our systems and our currently existing response networks and our surveillance system. So that we're doing that all at once, instead of having people, one person only pay attention to opiates. And one person only looking at methamphetamines and alcohol. Um, instead, it's more of a comprehensive cohesive system that we've been working on with the whole central Oregon region. Um, I think one of the benefits of having Haley come in and look at what made the most sense for Crook County. Will be really valuable for us and then being able to leverage the relationships we already have. Um. Because of time, I think what I'll offer up is, again, when Alex reaches out to us for agenda items. If there's something that you really want to dig into, so if you get a chance to look at plans. Um, if there's a piece of that that you want us to highlight in the space, you can make that request of staff. Um, the other thing is that uh. You know, these plans are community plans, so there's multiple avenues for community members and partners to provide. But it doesn't necessarily have to be just us, so if you can share with your networks. It doesn't necessarily have to be just us. So if you can share with your networks that these plans exist. Part of presenting here is that awareness piece. Is there anything Haley or staff that's specific that you need from the group today or, or no?
I think for the Fair Health Access, just if there are specific ways that you or people you talk to would like to see implementation or communication about those plans, I think that that would be really helpful. We did get some community feedback already from a couple of events we had earlier in the year. So you do have some sort of an idea, but if you have any other things or anything to add to that, I would greatly appreciate that.
Yeah. And then I think for our plan, I know I've been reaching out to some folks already. Some of your names are familiar, but just, I guess, be on the lookout for them now for me and hopefully diving into this a little bit deeper over the next weeks.
We're cruising. Yeah. The next agenda item is around a body of work that, and we, the last session actually, last week, or the most recent session was last week. So we, having it in this meeting is a little bit after the prep, but it's an ongoing project called Data to Action in Oregon. It's funded by the National Institutes of Health. And essentially, we have at our community level disposal some researchers who would like to help us in our work. Thank you, Courtney. And so they've been reaching out with targeted emails and it's cold calls. So if you're, if you have received an email about this project, I know AJ has already reached out to me and I don't know what this is.
I bet with my mind.
Excellent, so good. They're really, they're wanting to identify what our needs are around data and are offering some capacity to be able to do some work on behalf of the community. And it's not specific to any one entity. I know that they're very interested in behavioral health space, but also how that interacts with our hospital systems, our cures fees, law enforcement and legal space. And so I, in the meeting packet, there is information about that that project. And for us to share in the space, and it is a legitimate ask, it's not just some random, somebody trying to sell us. I get pitches all the time for data systems and surveillance system. They are researchers based here in Oregon who are, there's, I think, a handful of counties across the state that were identified as perhaps needing a little extra support in this space. So I, I think there's two other sessions, listening sessions. One is virtual, one is in-person, I believe. Thank you, Alex, for pulling up the site. All this information is in the website. But if you can find staff members or neighbors or friends to plug into this opportunity, it, I think it could benefit our community to have some additional support in that research space and data space.
There's also a survey. If somebody isn't able to attend a session, they can complete a survey. Right on the website.
And you'll be paid if you do it.
There you go.
Sometimes incentives are nice, right?
All right. The only other things that we have on the agenda today are if you have something burning that you want to tell us right now that you want on a future agenda item. Some things that are kind of rolling forward as we get restarted are working with our schools and some of that crisis intervention, identification and intervention work that we'd like to hear a little bit more about and getting some resources from parent, for parents into this space. We threw out a ton of information today. It will get better. The good news is that there's a lot of information to share. There's a lot of work happening in this community around health and behavioral health, prevention in those spaces, health promotion. So we will probably continue to hear a lot of that. And one of the goals of this work is to increase awareness so that we can also advocate with elected officials if there are gaps or things that exist that aren't being utilized. So, if there's anything burning, you may speak now for future agenda items. Or you can email Alex or reach out to any of our staff support for future agenda items. We'll come that feedback. Otherwise, we are meeting October sixth, our next scheduled space. And we'll be at St. Charles Pranville. Thank you, Kim and team. There will also be a virtual option and I see stuff being on something.
Can I just plug something really fast? We're having our National Recovery Month event on September nineteenth at Pioneer Park. So if anybody wants to just come and participate or come and table and share information about your your agency, the community, please reach out to Haley. She is in charge of getting all that organized. And we're really looking forward to making this event bigger and better than it's been.
And I will be sending out a formal email invite when we can, as we be in like the next four or five.
And we'll put her email in the notes. Justin, thanks.
All right, folks, we're going to be 101. Look at us on time. Thank you all very much for taking the time out of your day. We'll see you October sixth at Fountain Park.
Katie, I just had this thing. It's not a big deal or anything, but I always have it in my purse. The Sonic Lodge did a thing years ago. My son was two. And they did a health thing and they also took fingerprints, like thumbprints of the little kid. I have never seen one done like that before since, and he's nineteen now. I don't know if that is something that I should maybe take to like the, like a board, like the, the school board to do a health thing like that, but they had all the different things set up. You know, the tooth cleaning, the here, you know, the vision, all that kind of stuff. But I've never seen them do this too. And I've had it with me all these years in case anything ever happened to him. You know, I would have that with me on record.
I think, Ladel, would you mind sending that to Alex?
Of course. Like I said, I've always had it, but just the other day I saw it in my wallet and I was like, oh, well, maybe I'll just talk to Katie about it. Just, you know, because it was a great idea.
Great. Thank you for saying.
Just email me, Ladel. We'll put it in the meeting minutes.
Okay, sis. I mean, I didn't even know if it had anything to do with anything like this. I just wanted to bring it up because it was, you know, a great thing.
Get involved about it.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.